Basically federally funded, administered through the state of Ohio. For this year, for 2013, we are eligible for about $75,000. That's our allocation at this point. This is the second of two hearings. The first hearing was April 22nd. We've kind of narrowed down the scope of what we've planned to do. We have a house on, as you probably know, on 4858 Richland Avenue. It's right next to our fire station, too. When I started term of office, it was being used as storage. We took some of this, we took the material out of there. We would like to put it into service for low and moderate income housing to be administered by the Metropolitan Housing Authority. So it needs a major upgrade. The kitchen's been taken out, the bathroom's been taken out. It hasn't been really run or maintained as a, as a house or home for many years. The approximate cost of renovation will probably end up to be, total cost, $65,000, according to this. We'll be doing some window replacement, downspout, gutters, et cetera. As I say, it hasn't been used for a long time. I believe the original purpose for purchasing this property was to expand our footprint on our fire station. And that would be available if we ever need to do that. So we're not interested in selling the place, but the fact is that it's been laying dormant for many years. The feeling is that it's a good location for low and moderate income housing, Metropolitan Housing administers our other three houses, the two on Blackburn and the one on Central. This is a good location. It's on a bus route. It's right next to a hardware store and a grocery store, so it's convenient for anybody who needs to get around without a vehicle. And again, it's, it's something we hope to put online by the end of the year, if not beginning of next year. And at that point, that's all we have to speak unless you have questions. Well, the public has questions. So we'll go from there.
Council members, anybody have questions?
As far as the renovation, are you planning anything for, say, curb appeal, landscaping, trees, that sort of thing?
Good question. I assume we can put some trees there. According to this, exterior-
It already has trees out in front. I mean, it's pretty well landscaped.
Yeah.
Decent plant size.
I mean, it does have trees out.
Right.
There is, there is a landscaping component to this, but you're right. There is trees, there's shrubs in front of the house and whatnot.
They should take care of them when they're doing the work.
Well, we'll see how that works out.
Right, exactly.
That's the-
Again, window replacement, final siding, downspout roof, rear patio replacement to, to include accessible roof and roof coverings, new entry doors, storm and hardware. Interior will be electrical upgrades and improvements, lighting fixtures, receptacles, dry receptacles, removal of security system. I didn't know they had one, I guess. Central air conditioning add-on, kitchen cabinets, as far as I know, is pretty much gutted. Looks like it needs a heater, plus all the other appliances. And again, this is, this is actually a good purpose for this type of community development. Block grant money. It's supposed to be targeted for this, so it comes in handy. Any other questions? Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, yeah.
Okay. I go by it. I don't bother shrubbery one way, the other-
Yeah, but I- I have noticed that often in the past-
Yeah, I think there's two. I think there's two street trees out in front.
There's some nice trees and there's some maybe hydrangea or something blooming there at the time.
I think the only question right now is with the, I think the fire department's using some of the garage for storage and we'll have to work that out.
My question, you brought it up that this was bought probably in the, in the past for potentially expanding the footprint of the fire department. Are there any plans for that in the near future?
No, not right now. If you remember, probably about four or five years ago, we were discussing either doing two things. One is adding, centralizing both our stations to one location, partially by the highway, or, or actually going with a third station, which was pretty much cost prohibitive, if I remember correctly. Not so much the construction, but the actual operation of it in terms of personnel operations, because you'd have to add at least another, no, three shifts, at least six to buy new fire, firefighters to do that. But that, so, but the idea is you don't want to give up the real estate if we have it already.
Okay.
Okay.
And I've never been in that house. How, what, what's the footprint? Are there two bedrooms, three bedrooms?
Ah, that's a good question. I think it's two.
I think it's two as well.
I haven't taken tours in about two years. It's pretty much a ranch, so everything's pretty much on the first floor. There is a basement. After that, I can't remember much more about than that.
Probably two bedrooms.
Yeah.
Two bedrooms. This is a house that's, that's very well suited, given the grade leading up to the front door for ADA improvements as well, where it could have an access ramp. And when the renovations are going on, it would be nice to have bathroom features and kitchen features that might, that would be ADA compliant as well with this home, which would only enhance, I believe, it's the utility of the house.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Some questions there? I guess not. Okay, I guess the last thing, of course, is anybody from the public can sign the sheet, sign-in sheet, which I'll get to you in a minute.
I got sheet.
Oh, you got it already? Okay. So that's it, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. We will just kind of hang loose till 7:30. Good evening, again. This is city council, regular session tonight. It's just about 7:30. We had a public hearing about community development block grant, renovations to a-
Oh, my gosh, that's funny.
-residence on Richland Avenue that the city owns. And from the discussion that we had, I do believe we're going to go ahead with this. It is now 7:30. We will move into our regular session. First action is to establish a quorum. We have five voting members here tonight, which is a quorum of voting members. Communications, I just have one communication from the Commission for Disabilities. Carolyn Lewis, who is a serving member of the commission, would like to be reappointed for another three-year term. And if there are no objections, we do need a motion.
Hold up.
Make a motion. There's the motion.
I'll second.
There's a second. All those in favor of accepting, of reappointing Carolyn Lewis to the Board of Disabilities, to Commission for Disabilities signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carolyn, congratulations. Reports and communications from other elected officials?
I think we all received this in our email today, but Longview Heights Road's going to be closed between Old Coach and Palmroy Road tomorrow for a water line repair. So it might be handy for people to know that starting about 8:30 or so, the roads will be shut down.
Thank you.
Yes? I have an announcement, and that is that on June 3rd, I was not here at our city council regular meeting, because I was at the International Towngown Association, their eighth annual conference, and I was presenting on the Joint Police Advisory Council, which was very well received. The people who came to my session were from University of Scranton, Boston College was there, Miami of Ohio had a representative there who was actually a faculty member in their counselor ed program and is on city council, so kind of a kindred spirit with myself, who actually came. The whole presentation was well received. It was about an hour long, to where I was talking about several different features, which I think really sparked a lot of interest in other municipalities. In particular, the MOU that with, that deals with mutual assist. They were, I think a lot of other cities were very interested in that. They were also interested in our joint police cruiser, which they thought was very unique, that the city of Athens had something like that. And one that really caused a stir, in a good way, was people being very interested in the city safety tour that took place last fall. And they were impressed with the fact that the safety tour not only covered the city itself, but also OU property and identifying areas that needed either better or proper lighting, or crosswalks, or things of that nature. So I think that it was a big hit for the city of Ohio to reach out and be recognized through, again, this international conference.
Patterson, can you, just, you mentioned MOUs. Could you explain that real quickly?
Absolutely. Number and of understanding.
Between-
An agreement between the city of Athens and Ohio University, signed off by the mayor, as well as the president of Ohio University.
And there are quite a few of these MOU's.
Different components to it, mutual aid in terms of police, what you mentioned, and fire, of course. In terms of infrastructure, remember, part of that is also the $50,000 we get per year for the fire truck. Just a whole slew of different agreements that are out there. And they're working on different ones as it goes on.
The evidence of cooperation between the city and the university. Other elected officials? Now, our treasurer has a report.
Thank you. President, please. I have my first quarter report. Just draw your attention to the interest income page, which at the end of first quarter, we were at 17,922.45. And you notice the year-to-date includes April, which is very close to the projected 101,650. There's a two-year CD that matured in April, a large amount of interest. But, but even given that, we should still stand to exceed the projections probably by about third, by the end of the year.
Oh, no. All those things report.
Okay. Anything, any questions or comments regarding the treasurer's report?
Yeah.
It's a pity report.
We like it.
Yeah.
Okay, Mayor.
You mentioned the closure of Longview Heights. Also in that area, of course, if you've gone through the area of Palmroy Road, you'll see that they have signs up for the Gypsy Morph aeration treatments. I think you probably noticed that along the way. We are coming up, of course, on the Ohio Brew Week. We have two ordinances that have to be passed on that, just to be aware of the fact that we will be closing the street, 29th, on that. The other one, of course, is that there is going to be, let's see, there's going to be the dedication of the house there for the Habitat for Humanities on Alexander. This will be Friday, this Friday, 21st, at 6:00 PM. That's to Alexander Street. So this is to welcome the Jennifer Folk and her son Cameron to the house. I guess they're finishing up with the house, just to let you know. As I say, that'll be this 21st, this Friday, 6:00 PM. Planning Commission, of course, has a meeting this Thursday. We're going to have two cases. One is the Union Street Development, Title 41. This is on the old HDL's lot. Another one will be a lot split on Utah Place, I believe. And just to remind everybody that there is the FEMA public hearing July 11th. And that's pretty much what I have, just to keep you guys up to what's coming up.
So Mayor, the lot split on Utah Place, that was one home that was taken down, demolished, and then it's going to, it's going to be a lot. Like, for two homes.
I'm not sure. Is that the case? Okay.
I believe it.
Okay. As far as I know, it is the lot and bulk controls is conforming. I think the question that arose at the staff meeting today was the back end of that lot. It's a four lot and one back end that's actually outside the city. So the question is, can we actually combine lots if parts outside is in the township? So that's where we left it. And again, now they're resolved by Thursday, one way or the other.
They may, they may have to go through an annexation.
Either that or variance, and through you guys to do it. I mean, if it goes up to a lot split that requires a variance, then it's, I think, goes to you guys.
I'm your head.
Yes, thank you. I was going to talk about HB 5. Tonight, I received an email from Member Nysley today. She had received a forward regarding an OML, I think maybe all of you did, about action being taken regarding this tax uniformity bill. And so I did let Member Nysley know that we, Tina, in my office, had put together a letter that the mayor and I also signed off on, and we already sent that out to Debbie Phillips, our representative, because it is in the House right now, and that's, so she would be the one representing us. And we seceded to Chairman Batchelder's office. And what we're doing is evidently, there is a push to push that bill through, and, but there's still been a lot of meetings and compromises taking place. It is in the House Ways and Means Committee. However, Chairman Beck of the House Ways and Means has been trying to work with both sides to reach a compromise on issues. However, excuse me, the chair, the speaker does have the authority to tell the chairman to move it along. So what we're doing is asking them not to do that, to give, give it a little bit more time. We're actually very close to that, to a compromise in most areas. And, but we've heard that they want to push it through by the end of June, and we'd like it to just go through the whole process. So we did send a letter that I, I sent, and I could send it to anybody else if they want to see it, but that's where we are on that. So Member Nysley's question was, did we want council to take any other actions, such as another resolution or anything? And I'm going to say no, not at this time. I think we covered it with the letter. You know, I won't say, I won't ask for help, you know, at some time, but hopefully they'll, they'll just continue going through the process and we can reach some of these compromises. That being said, I think you've all been invited to a meeting that we're having for municipalities in southeastern Ohio that will be here Thursday, here in council chambers at 1:30. And you're all invited to come. We are still waiting. A lot depends on the schedules for Debbie Phillips, Lou Gentile, and Chairman Beck. However, Kent Garrett from the Ohio Municipal League has confirmed that he will be here along with some other people from CCA and quite a few people in the area. Belgrade, Beverly, Chillicothe, Galpolis, Ironton, Marietta, Nelsonville, and Portsmouth have all confirmed that they will send people. So should be an interesting meeting, and as you well know, Tina will have a good presentation and update you on, on the changes and things that, you know, we've been able to work with. You know, it's, it's been a moving target and, but, you know, we understand, at least I know Tina and I do understand, the concept of compromise. And so some things have changed that we weren't necessarily in favor of, but, you know, it's not all bad. But it needs to work for everybody, so that it's not just what, what is being called a tax uniformity bill has become a tax carve-out bill with lots of breaks for certain businesses. And we need to, you know, the revenue neutral phrase is, is important, as you know, from my report, as far as our tax revenue for the year. So that's where we are on that, and I hope that some of you can come. If you think you can, you know, let us know. Just a quick email to me or Tina, it'd be great to have you here. Thanks.
Will it be recorded?
No report, Mr. President.
Will it be recorded?
The council members or anybody? Move on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 6513. An ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $720,000 of notes by the city of Athens in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of constructing street improvements in the University Estates area of the city and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 6513.
Second.
And this particular ordinance will pay for our estimated costs for improving certain roads in the University Estates. As council members know, and probably parts of the audience do, we have been moving forward with assessments for the improvements that need to be made on certain of the roads there. And so there will be several other ordinances, moving the necessary pieces of legislation into place so that we can accomplish these improvements this summer.
All those in, in favor of ordinance 6513 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is accepted. Ordinance 6613. An ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary, and to enter into contracts for the University Estates street improvements, project number 265, and declaring an emergency. Again, Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 6613.
Second.
And this particular ordinance, as it describes, allows, authorizes our Service Safety Director for the city to advertise and accept the bids, so that we can enter into the contracts for the same project, the University Estates improvements to the streets there.
All those in favor of ordinance 6613 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 7013. An ordinance amending the Athens City Code to establish Title 47, Resource Extraction and Waste Disposal Monitoring and Mitigation, introduced by Councilmember Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt 7013.
Second.
This, as we've discussed many times in council, will to help protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Athens by monitoring and having a mitigation program in, in place for resource extraction and waste disposal that may occur in the city of Athens.
Any comments? All those in favor of ordinance 7013 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 7113. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency for a community development block grant for calendar year 2014, federal fiscal year 2013, and declaring an emergency. Member Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 7113.
Second.
Thank you. Again, this, we came up as for a second hearing, public hearing tonight, which is described a number of improvements to the property down at 458 Richland Avenue, which is a city property with a one-story structure on it that needs multiple repairs, new windows, new doors, a number of features, new appliances. So this ordinance would be to approve of the, the application of $86,490 that would go towards improvements in this property.
I'm sorry, could, could you just explain what the property is going to be used for?
I, I did not, thank you. This would be for low to moderate income, and it would be ultimately managed by the Athens Municipal Housing Authority.
Metropolitan.
Metropolitan, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Ordinance 7113. All those in favor of this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is also adopted. Moving on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 7213. An ordinance renewing a revocable license to the owner of 22 Ohio Avenue for an existing fence on the city right-of-way. Ordinance 7313. An ordinance declaring certain police department firearms no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and amending the 2013 appropriation ordinance for the purchase of new firearms. We have a resolution for first reading. Resolution 0913. A resolution approving the report of the Assessment Equalization Board on objections concerning the estimated assessments relative to, relative to the construction of street improvements in a portion of the area of the city known as University Estates, and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we consider resolution 913 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension being that we need to move all of the legislative pieces, all of the ordinances forward for the University Estates assessments.
All those council members in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Member Nysley, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of resolution 0913.
Second.
And this particular ordinance accepts the report of the Assessment Equalization Board. It's a volunteer board that met and reviewed the appeals that have been made by certain property owners in the University Estates area, and made recommendations on how those should, how those appeals should be handled. And the minutes have been submitted and approved, and, and the report now would need to be approved.
Any comments?
I just want to say thank you to the citizens who do these equalization boards.
I would, I would like to second that, or echo what you just said. In that, you know, these individuals did volunteer their time, David Descutner, John Garsky, and Linda Phillips, for spending their time going through item by item, all the issues.
I'd like to add that I, in reading the minutes, there were some excellent questions asked to follow up with the letters of protest or whatever that were sent in. And the people who wrote those letters did not show up to the, to the meeting, which is okay, that's fine, but I just thought it was really the, the way the questions were posed and the questions that were asked. The three citizens obviously did their homework a little bit and knew what they were coming in. They'd reviewed the materials, and I was impressed with that, looking at the minutes and reading that. So again, thank you to those citizens for doing that.
And thank you all members for those comments regarding the participation of these people. We're accepting, all those in favor of accepting resolution 0913 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The resolution is accepted. And we'll move on then to ordinances, ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 8013. An ordinance determining to, to proceed with the improvements to certain properties in the city of Athens, Ohio, and described in resolution number 0513, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we consider this ordinance 8013 under suspension.
Second.
The reason being that this is also part of the University Estates Assessment and Improvements Project.
So the request is to suspend the rules on ordinance 8013. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Member Nysley, again, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 8013.
Second.
And this particular ordinance, what this does is moves forward, determining to proceed with the improvements that we've described in University Estates. It was a resolution 0513 that was passed by council on April 15th. And this moves the necessary contracts and for the properties, for the property improvements for this project.
All those in favor, we have a comment? I'm sorry. All those in favor of ordinance, of accepting ordinance 8013 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Moving on to ordinance 8113. An ordinance amending the 2013 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we consider ordinance 8113 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension being that we have several appropriations related to projects that are needing to begin immediately.
We have a request to suspend the rules on the ordinance 8113. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify- suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 8113.
Second.
And this particular appropriation ordinance has three parts to it. There will be $11,478 for the, to the Street Rehabilitation Fund, and this will cover the increased local match for our urban paving project. This is a portion of the project, a portion of summer paving to occur down by what's known locally as the South Y. It's near the intersection of Route 50 and the Old Pomeroy Road. ODOT, Ohio Department of Transportation, will be doing repairs there this summer, and there is a portion of that road that's within the city limits, and so we'll be contributing the cost to that. The original estimate, I believe, was at $36,000, but the revised estimate has come in with a few thousand dollars more needed for the repair. The second portion is $4,200 to the Community Development Block Grant Fund 248, and these are for the administrative costs allowable under this portion of the grant, $4,200. The last portion of this, I believe that each of you have received a map of the improvements to the Mike Stanley Memorial Park, and it's an appropriation of $5,000. And this would be for, to the General Fund Other Administrative. And what this is, which, $5,000 would cover the costs of an estimate made by Greenleaf Landscaping to revitalize that area. I don't think we've had any improvement since it was originally installed in that location, so it's, it's due for some improvements to it.
Questions or comments? Ordinance 8113, the rules have been suspended. So, all, everyone in favor of accepting ordinance 8113 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 8213. An ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29, Housing Regulation, Chapter 2933, Fire Protection Systems, and declaring an emergency. Member Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. We talked briefly about this last week, some kind of housekeeping from the code enforcement director. This particular one would include, insert the language into 29.33.07, single dwelling units, concerning carbon monoxide detectors. And the language to be inserted says that they will be AC-powered, which was, I think, an oversight when it was first written, when we first introduced and passed the carbon monoxide detector program.
This is first reading. Ordinance 8313. An ordinance amending ordinance 02910, establishing fees as required by the Athens City Code. Again, Member Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. We talked about this briefly last week. And I looked at the code again, and Debbie and I got together, and there is only one section of the code that needs to be updated in this particular ordinance, and it's section point, section 5.07.06, Construction Activities Fees. This has to do with our sewer, stormwater, not sewer, stormwater drainage plan. Now we need to insert the fees that are required by that plan when people put, plant some metals in so that they can be reviewed for stormwater planning. And the fees are less than one acre, $25. One to five acres, $100. And more, five acres or more, the fee shall be established on a time and materials basis for review costs.
Mayor.
Again, we are currently a stormwater management plant together. If you remember, we put a fee on the building, utility billing at the base rate to develop the plant. The other part of this portion here is the, the actually study of people submitting excavation plans. In other words, somebody wants to develop a piece of property, they start digging it up. We need to, starting, in, start this month, we're requiring anybody who does such activity to actually submit some kind of excavation plan, erosion plan, to the code office to look at it and make sure it fits. And this is part of the fee structure for that. Again, we want to control what comes, that goes, alpha site, when it's being excavated in terms of erosion, but also slope, so there isn't an issue. Again, there's a whole section of the city that do not have a fully developed stormwater system, but eventually we need to get there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance 8413. An ordinance amending ordinance 7813, authorizing construction and construction engineering associated with the safe routes to school sidewalk improvements, project number 268, and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
So this is a follow-up to what we discussed in terms of, I don't think we need to suspend this one, do we?
No.
For our sidewalk appropriation. Sidewalks to schools appropriation. The engineering costs, right?
Moving on to ordinance 8513. An ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on June 29th, 2013, for Ohio Brew Week, and declaring an emergency. Again, Member Pappy.
So, there's three ordinances related to this, and I believe we need to move to suspend.
Okay, so we're going to ask that the rules be suspended for ordinance 8513.
Second.
So, um, oh, we want to go-
Okay, okay.
Because it's happening-
All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 8513 signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Okay, now the rules have been suspended. Member Pappy, go ahead.
So I move to adopt 8413. Oh, I'm sorry, 8513.
Second.
So, as we discussed before, this is the issue with unnecessary noise that we do for every event that we have on Court Street, so that we can be following our code.
For sanctioned events.
Sanctioned events.
Sanctioned events.
Sanctioned event.
And every event.
Rules have been suspended on the ordinance 8513 because this is coming up pretty quickly. All those in favor of, of ordinance 8513 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 8613. An ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on June 29th, 2013, during the Ohio Brew Week event, and declaring an emergency. Member Pappy.
Again, I move to suspend 8613.
Second. We're asking that the rules be suspended for ordinance 8613. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Member Pappy, the rules have been suspended.
So I move to adopt 8613.
Second.
So again, this is part of when we have an event, and there want, there are vendors to be allowed within that event. And so that's what we're moving to vote on tonight.
Mayor Wile.
You know, of course, that there are basically no registration fees for charitable organizations, but fees for outside, other vendors, I believe. Special events vending fee of $150. For regular operators and other ones, $500. So this clarifies it. It's just not a blanket suspension of all the vending laws. So there's a fee involved.
There is a fee involved, and they need to register if they haven't already. They need to register seven days in advance, it looks like. So hopefully they'll get those in because it's, well, the 29th. They've got a little bit of time.
Okay. All those in favor of approving, of adopting ordinance 8613 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 8613 has been adopted. We have announcements and other business.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the auditor's financial report for May of 2013.
Second.
Everybody have a chance to look at that? Okay. So, to, motion to adopt the auditor's financial report for May of 2013. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have adopted that. And we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislation, on legislative items in city services that were not covered during this agenda. Not a lot of citizens out there. Committee meetings next week. We've got a hand up from Member Nysley, Member Paul.
And, and, Member Pappy will be chairman, because I will be gone. Chairperson and leading it.
Okay. And we may have a few other committees on there. And then, Mayor Wile.
In terms of finance and personnel, I'm contemplating trying to move our regular audits meeting, normally on Wednesday, 2:30 to 3:30 if possible, mostly because of conflicts with the Service Safety Director in terms of other meetings. I believe you've got a meeting at 2:00. So, just to make it work for us. That's okay. But that's where we're going to go with that. I'm sure there'll be something for finance and personnel next Monday. Now we'll find something.
Any other comments or questions? No, just faces?
Yeah.
Okay. And so we're going to call adjournment at 8:05. That's pretty good.